Okie doke, might as well start now. Good evening and welcome to the town of Wareham Board of Selectmen meeting for January 5th, 2021. Happy New Year, everybody. You survived the worst year in recent memory. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, there are five selectmen present, as well as Town Administrator Sullivan and Town Council Bowen, and as well as Town Moderator Smith.
Ah, let's see, Pledge of Allegiance. Derek, would you lead us in the pledge, please? You have to turn your mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Announcements. Alan?
Just one announcement. The ZBA and the Conservation Commission both have a meeting tomorrow on Littleton Drive on the housing project at 6:30. Just let people know. There's a possibility that the ZBA one may be continued two weeks later, but just so everybody knows, there is two at the same time for the same project. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Hello, and announcements. That's about things that are upcoming. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
All set, thanks.
Judy?
No, thank you.
I don't have anything under announcements. Citizens comments. If there's anyone who would like to speak to the board, then let us know in the chat function. I'll give it about 30 seconds, and if nobody pops up, we'll move on.
Do they want me to say something? Want me to?
Okay, ding ding, 30 seconds. We'll move on to board comments. Alan?
Okay, there's some announcements today. The basically, the first responders will be getting their vaccines starting on January 11th. They actually can get their vaccine shots done at their facility, or they can join with other municipalities for one location. Have it done that way as well. We're going to have the issues as far as individuals 75 or older, or those with two, what they call qualified illnesses, will now be in what they call Phase 2 Step 1, which is probably going to come in sometime in February. The general vaccine for the base population, they're looking at right now April, so that everybody has a timeframe of where they are, and that's as of this afternoon. The only other thing of real importance is that the restrictions that were placed by the governor on the 26th of December, we should have an announcement probably Thursday, most likely Friday, if they're going to change it all and be more or less restrictive. I'll leave it the way it is. I believe the city of Boston today announced that they were going to stay with the restrictions as they were and not make a change. So those are the only real important things at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
All set, thanks.
Jim?
Yeah, a few weeks ago, well, probably five weeks ago, the board voted to have you draft a letter and send it off to our representative regarding keeping the additional fee, the impact fee, and turning it into part of the excise fee. I was wondering if you'd sent that letter out yet and if you received any response related to that. We voted to have you do that, and you were going to do that.
Impact fee?
Yeah, you know, so that it doesn't go away. It gets added as part of the excise, and we continue to have the additional 3% coming into town coffers.
Oh, on the marijuana thing?
Yeah. Yeah, we really need to move on that because I was reading some of the stuff.
Write it down right here.
And time is, you know, the clock is ticking on that, and we might
and Yeah, because I know they're looking at that. Sorry, I neglected to write that down, I guess, that meeting. And of course, if it's not written down in my world, it doesn't exist, so my fault.
No, I just, I figured I'd bring it up.
Nope, that's fine. I'll take care of it.
And also, we're trying to close the payment off for 165 Great Neck Road related to the Latham Center, so we'd like to get on the agenda for next week, and hopefully it'll be ready to go. Deed restriction to be approved by the board. I'll be working with Mr. Sullivan and our attorney Bowen. We've been working on this for a while, and we really need to move it through because, you know, they're done. They've got the community permit they're in. They need to close out their books, so we have a responsibility to get that done.
Yep, that's fine. Let me know Thursday if you're there, and we'll put it on.
Well, you know what? I think it'd be good to put it on, and if we need to, to continue it. But if we don't have like a drop dead date, it's just going to get kicked down the road again and again and forgotten. And I feel sort of embarrassed that we haven't been able to get this done.
That's fine. So it's going to be what, a vote to authorize?
No, a vote to approve it. I mean, we should have that wrapped up. There's a deed restriction already in place, and hopefully we'll be able to do it as a rider right on top of that. The deed restriction is held by about four different state agencies, and it's a 51-year restriction. And no sense to recreate the wheel if we can utilize what's there and just do a rider on top of that. I've already discussed it with Attorney Bowen and Mr. Sullivan, and I think we will meet Thursday to try to get this done.
Yep.
And that's for both us and the Community Preservation Committee. Hopefully we can do it in one document, that little rider.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep, I'll get that on. Judy? Yeah, the only thing I have is, some people found out today that the new and improved transfer station is open. My understanding from what I saw people commenting on Facebook, I didn't get out there to see it myself, was that it was fairly busy, but yet it went through fairly smoothly. People were talking about getting in and out of there in five minutes. They liked the new layout. You know, some people had some comments and concerns, but you know, we can talk about those later under the trash update. So the other thing is, Madam Moderator has pushed off the special town meeting for the East Wareham rezoning, and also the two articles relating to Westfield until March 13th, which is a Saturday. And that's at noon time on Spalene Field. So that has been pushed off. It's no longer scheduled for January 16th. So if you made plans to come January 16th, you can abandon those plans and try to replan for March 13th. Noon time, Spalene Field, Saturday. So I just wanted to say that over here.
Maybe.
Citizen comments. We went through, we did that already. Board comments were done. Appointments, we don't have any licenses or permits. Judy, tell us about 99 West LLC, please.
Yes, we have an application for, from 99 West LLC, DBA, 99 Restaurant. However, for a change in manager. However, it's missing the corporate signature to the minutes to allow the change. It's also missing the corporate signature for the amendment, and we haven't been able to do the query on the new manager. I can make a motion. Everything else is in order. I don't think they've paid us, to be honest, actually, now that I look at it. So I can make a motion subject to receipt of all of those four things.
Okay, can we have a second?
So the
I will second that, but I believe that on page four or five on the application portion, which it goes to the A, B, C, C, the address of the new manager is incomplete. It just has a street address with no town after it. So if you could look into that and make sure that is filled in, that would be great.
Okay.
Look, that's a quite a few things, though. We're talking about quite a few things here now.
Yeah, it's a lot. They came in
I mean, that's a plethora of stuff. That's not like one or two items, you know? Maybe we ought to just wait until they get it. Maybe we ought to just wait until they get it corrected.
Yeah. They came in like the day before the snowstorm, and we've been either closed or short-staffed since that time. The company has been told what it needs, and it was told that last week, but we don't have it as of 5 o'clock today.
I would agree with Patrick that we hold off till next week. It's only a week. Let's just get it all done right once.
Okay, Jim just withdrew his second. You withdrawing your motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we'll put it back on next week.
Thank you.
Okay, jumping down, COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're having a pretty, pretty good spike. 92 confirmed new cases over the past seven days, and that, and over the past two weeks, we've had 155 new confirmed cases. What's pretty alarming, though, is, and I wanted to get back to verify this, but it looks like we've lost 10 people over the past month. So it's a substantial amount.
Wow.
When you think about it, we've had 856 cases since March, so 18, over 18% of our total cases since the beginning have happened in the last two weeks. So, you know, this is pretty alarming. You know, it's, as we said, wear your mask when possible, try and stay home. You know, we, obviously, we're still working, town hall and things like that, so we understand people have to go to work, and certain things would take as many precautions as possible. And, you know, it's running, it's running pretty darn good through our community, so.
Pierre, just want to make a comment today. Again, with the Governor, Lieutenant Governor, they were, actually made the statement that they felt that the new strain, which is highly contagious, even though it's no more risk than the existing one, is here in Massachusetts already. So therefore, people need to be extra careful because this particular strain transmits much easier than the first one we were dealing with. So I would expect that the increase is going to continue for a while. Everybody really be careful.
Just the spike from Christmas and New Year's is going to be huge, I would guess.
Yeah, but again, with this new version, it will just magnify it that much more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it is what it is. I mean, by now, we know what we have to do to keep safe. And, you know, the cat's out of the bag as far as Christmas and the New Year's are concerned. You know, can't go back on those. You know, whatever, whatever happened then is out there. But with that in mind, understand that, you know, you're going to be encountering more and more people who have the infection when you're out. So take precautions. Wear the mask, you know, keep a bottle of, you know, spray hand sanitizer or something in your car. You know, you get done with the store, throw your groceries in the trunk. Do your hands right there in the car. You know, little things like that can make all the difference. And, you know, this is no joke. It's life or death stuff, so please, take care of yourself. We want to see you enjoy the summer here, because that's really the only reason we live here. It sure as hell isn't this weather. So please, be careful. Trash disposal. The grand rollout today.
Yeah, so let me see if I can pull it up. So just to, you know, we had the grand opening today. So we've, just so everybody understands, we've hired two new labors for that. However, you'll see multiple employees there for at least the first few weeks. The reason being, we're cross-training people because when somebody gets sick, or if somebody leaves or something, we need to have other people available. And right now, as we, as we knew, there's some advantage being taken of not requiring to buy the bags this week. So there's, some people are being pretty, pretty smart on that and going in there with a bunch of stuff. So you know what I'd really ask is the patience. We've, we've certainly had some people say some interesting things to the staff. Some, some people claimed, "I will never buy bags. You'll have to arrest me." So it's, it's going to be interesting, but starting next Tuesday, you will be required to have bags, or you will not be able to dump there, which leads into, you should get a notification tonight. It's going out on the town website that the bags are available at Shaw's. They're available at the onset Village Market. Municipal Maintenance Department on 95 Charge Pond Road, we've been selling them on Thursday, January 7th. Their hours are 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and they'll be selling them this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So cash and check only. Check is preferred, if possible. We prefer not to handle cash. We're doing it especially on Saturday because that's when the, when the
Brush pile.
Yeah, brush pile, thank you, is, is open, and people are required to have a sticker for the brush pile. So it's a perfect time for them, some of them, to get their bags as well. And so I appreciate Municipal Maintenance stepping up for that, and we, there's some, there's some front office staff in there, so that's why we're turning that over to Municipal Maintenance, and that's where physically, when the stickers are available. And I'm still waiting to hear for that date. They were supposed to have come into the vendor last week, but let's double check. We know that was a holiday week. We will be selling the stickers physically at Municipal Maintenance as well. No longer at the multi-service center. They will be at Municipal Maintenance. One of the reasons is, again, there's, we cut staff out of the Division of Natural Resources, a part-time clerical person, so we will be, it's basically a more efficient operation to run out Municipal Maintenance. We understand it's an additional change for persons, but that's, considering Municipal Maintenance runs the operation, is the one that's required to do the deposits, and is the one that can expend from the revolving account. It makes a lot of sense to do it all from that location.
So I agree. Remarks, questions, Patrick?
I had some interesting comments today. Most of the people that went in there that I talked to, they all said that they thought it was very professionally run. They thought everybody was, you know, and not only that, but they said everybody was nice to them, which was another interesting thing because, you know, they were able to get their questions answered. They got through there relatively quickly. I mean, they said it was really, time was not the issue. I mean, there's a few people out there complaining about that. How come we have so many people working there? They did it with one and all this. But, you know, look, you're setting up a new system. You're doing a new thing, and Derek explained that, I think, pretty well. And, you know, you always get a few complainers because they complain about everything. But the majority of the people that I talked to that went in there today said it was very professional, very well set up, and the people were very nice to them.
Oh, thank you. I will say, Mr. Menard and his, his crew have done a fantastic job changing the layout, you know, trying to get it more efficient to get people in and out. We will have two instead of one, because if you remember in the past, if the one person, they didn't care what you threw out.
Correct.
So, but now they're charging the town, and they will turn, turn away any of the, any of the stuff on us, and charge us a lot more to get rid of that than the 77 and something a ton, so. Just trying to think if there's, there's anything else.
Alan's got a question?
That's not a question. The, I believe Jim knows also, I believe the onset market unfortunately only has the small bags right now. And the other thing is, I've been at the site. Dave Menard and his crew did an amazing job cleaning the place up, never mind relocating everything. You know, I went in there, I think, on Thursday. It was Friday, and I was really surprised at the massive changes. Yeah, whatever the day was this.
And the other thing is
I'm really, I'm really happy, you know, with what they've done, and I hope everybody appreciates it. As Patrick said and Derek said, there is no way to man that place with one person. One person cannot watch what's going on out. Actually, you probably need three people to have the real control of it, especially for the first couple of months when people are going to try and, you know, unfortunately, put stuff in there that we're not going to allow anymore. So it's going to be a tough run, but I hope people understand that we're doing the best we can. We had a great deal for a long time, and now we're having to deal with the trash in the real world, which is getting more expensive every month. Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing too is, I, you know, I'm trying to recall if I ever actually saw only one person there. I know that, you know, it's really not, it's not that safe to run that kind of machinery with just one person. So if anybody ever encountered one person there, it's probably because two other people banged in sick or something. It wasn't planned that way. I invariably saw two people there just about every time I went, so I don't know where that's coming from. Jim?
Yeah. On the one person, generally during the week, there's only one person. On weekends, it'd have two.
Okay.
They had cut back. They weren't restricting what came in. It just got thrown in there. There used to always be two personnel working there, but Covanta, who oversaw the operation for the CMW of that site, cut it back to one. And I was there today, made my maiden voyage, and it worked out well. And everything seemed to be going very smoothly. I had a chance to talk with Glenn Montaro for a couple of minutes. And, you know, there's going to be some hiccups here and there, and it's a good group, and they'll take care of it. And we also, for the first month, we have, we've hired a contractor to check their stickers and, and to, you know, make sure they're coming in, they have a sticker and whatnot. And I don't know, I don't want to put words in Mr. Sullivan's mouth, but if people are disrespectful of the workers there, I believe they have, they could lose their, the privilege of utilizing the facility. And if they don't want to use the bags, I believe they could lose their privilege of utilizing facilities. Would that be the case, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, it can be revoked. So, and they can also be fined, and when you think about it, it's actually trespassing and littering, so.
You know, and we're not, you know, it's not that the town is trying to be difficult, but it's a reality that there's a cost to operate the facility, and like Mr. Slaven said, you know, the party's over. We have to assume the cost of operation because the deal with Covanta and the, the district is, is over as of December, end of December. So, you know, we don't have the money in our operational budget to cover the cost of operation. Thanks.
Judy? Any remarks? You need to put on your mic, Judy.
No remarks, other than, yes, there are hiccups when a new program goes into place, and I have heard nothing but complimentary comments about not just the way it looks, but also the people who work there, that they're polite, and everybody's, everybody's trying really hard to make it work right.
Yeah, and one thing I'd like to, thank you, and one thing I'd like to make clear to people, if you need assistance, please ask. The reason for this is, in the past, with some of the, the transfer stations personnel over in Marion and over at Route 28, they went to help people with bags, and those people felt that they were, they were uncomfortable with the people reaching towards them, or they were brushed by them. So we need to, we've directed our personnel to, if people asked, to assist them, but they have to be asked. So we're not going to go through those same things, and I'm sorry. That's, that's what we experience nowadays, but that's, we got to make sure that we're, we're doing the right things, so.
Derek, could you, could you let everybody understand a little better about, because this has come up, about recyclables, please?
Yeah, it's a single stream recycling, so it is not going to see mass to be burnt. It is going across the street to be, to be separated, and that way, it's actually a simpler process for us. And, you know, we had the, if you remember, we had the compactor that used to be cardboard. That's now trash because our goal, as you've seen with some of the lines, is to make that operation as efficient, as efficient as possible, get the people in and out, and keep the traffic off of Route 28 as well, keep a safer operation. But again, you can put all your recyclables in one of those, in any one of those containers. You don't need to separate. What we do ask is, please, break down the cardboard. Don't leave it as a big box that takes up a lot of volume of the recycling bin, which means we have to, we have to pull them sooner, and each one of the pulls costs, costs money. And so, you know, anything we can do to save ends up saving, saving you, the person that's paying for it, so.
And it's obviously you won't be using bags for that.
Right, please do not put the plastic bags in there.
Right, no bags. You just take that stuff in a tray or whatever and put it in there directly. So you're not going to be paying for throwing that away.
Right, so. And that's, and again, there's, there's no cost. You know, and we want to make sure that people, again, are not bringing commercial operation stuff in, so it's, it's, this beginning's going to be a big education for, for all of us, and I appreciate everybody with their help working with the employees.
There's a place across the street for the commercial stuff.
Correct. We're actually, we've been requested, I got the price list from, from them today. So we're going to put that in our, in our trash section. We're not advocating to use them. We're just saying this is an alternative source for any of the construction and debris and other materials that are not accepted at the transfer station. For people to understand there's an outflow.
Yeah, and the born transfer station too takes commercial
Correct.
material, so that, that's a good, that's, that's a good resource, and we should list that in at least their website people can go to and look at it.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need to be a resin or a sticker for that, right, Jim?
No, you pay. You just, you know, they
You go on the scale.
Yep, or the guy looks at it and says, 20 bucks, 10 bucks, or whatever, you know, depending if you got something in there. Pretty good deal, actually.
Yeah, so if we list two of them, I don't, I don't think we're making any, any sort of statements. We're just giving people the options.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, moving, moving on to the curbside thing. Some people are calling ABC and trying to arrange service early because they've made the decision right now that they don't want to wait till April. They're probably, I would guess, prior transfer station sticker users that don't want to deal with the bags, or, you know, don't think it's economical for them that way, whatever their reasoning is. And I just wanted to clarify something for everybody. A couple of people said that ABC told them that the town didn't want barrels to be dispersed until March, but as I understand it, Derek, that is not the case, that that's
Yeah, no, I mean, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be something we would, we would ask. You know, if anybody's signing up with them, especially they're residents, get the, let's get the barrels to them as soon as possible. So we wouldn't try and stop that.
Yeah. Now, I would hazard a guess that ABC, like everybody else who's waiting for something to arrive at the door, you know, from the UPS truck or whatever, they're waiting for the tractor trailer to come for the barrel plant to drop them off to them. So, you know, this pandemic has affected all the supply streams as well, which is why, you know, it's taken this long to get the bags, which is why we don't have the stickers in hand yet to dispense, and it's also probably why ABC doesn't have the barrels for people. So this is, you know, these impacts are huge. You know, they shut down factories, they slow up delivery and everything else. So I would just ask everybody's patience in that regard. In the meantime, ABC is letting people put trash out in their own barrels when they sign up. So it's not like you're not going to have any trash service until April, but you're just going to have to use your own barrels.
Can I, I mean, you can, until April 1st, you can contract with whoever you want, I believe. And if you want to contract with ABC for three months, you can do that.
Yes.
And just so, maybe Mr. Sullivan could clarify that if you get the transfer station sticker now, or as soon as they're available, and you go for curbside collection, that that fee would be subtracted out of the curbside costs. Is that correct, Mr. Sullivan?
Um, yeah, almost. What would happen is, we're actually, we're setting up on the, the website there, which, God willing, will be, will have up very soon. Very soon, where you're actually requesting it. We're not going to take payment at that time. Well, what will happen is you'll be, you'll, you'll just be billed the whole way. Because it's a, uh, much more complex situation to accept the payment. Then credit it over, credit it to one, one quarter, that first quarter, then a second half. So we would just, you'd be able to get the, um, sticker at that time. The reason being, you're not opting out. You're just getting the transfer station sticker, so you're going to be billed for the, uh, full amount. So there's really. There, there's not much concern of somebody, uh, being a scofflaw unless they move out of town within the next month or so.
But once it's on the site, you will have the choice of either opting out or buying the curbside. Collection fee.
Correct, buying the curbside, uh, buying the, um, not buying the, the fee, you'd actually have the, you'd be able to. Opt out and just do the transfer station sticker, which you would pay one twenty-five at that time. Or if you're going with curbside, but you need a transfer stations, that's a second webpage. That's why we're going to separate the webpage, so people won't be confused on there and you'll be able to request the sticker at that time.
Right, but there's no extra, there's no double, no, no, no double charge.
Right, you're not going to be charged one hundred and twenty-five and then, um, you know, another three quarters. People should also be, remember that it's, uh, you're not being charged a full three sixty-five for the curbside for the year. You're going, it's going to be prorated. So, uh, that should help some of the seasonal as well, though we're concerned about paying a full three sixty-five. Because your season's probably not starting until, uh, April at the soonest anyways, so.
I heard today that Dooley, somebody called Dooley to try to get service between now and then. And they're not taking any customers from Wareham.
Yeah, some of them, some of them are not, it's a, it's a headache to take on new customers, especially for a short period of time, so.
Right, exactly.
Sounds like they're not, they're not doing it.
Well, cause now, you know, you gotta give them barrels and then you gotta try to get them back, you know?
Right. So, um, so they can, people can certainly reach out to whoever they want for the next, you know, until, till April 1. You know, but like you said, some are, some are not accepting.
Okay, anything else on trash? Alan? Okay, uh, let's move down to the marijuana host community agreements.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Those, any questions?
Yeah, before we engage in that, there's, um, it looks like we sort of missed, missed out on the process. We've got the, uh. Was it Treva, T R A V A? They haven't come for the board or been requested to enter into negotiations. That's the process we've been doing so far, is that first, the, the request is to enter into negotiations. And then it's the host agreement, so I think this just kind of got packed in with a few others, so. We probably want to keep the same process.
Yeah, we do, uh, okay, these were submitted to me, so.
Yeah, so I apologize if they got to you in that way.
We're, we're up to so many of these now that I can't remember who's who anymore.
Well, but have you already negotiated the contract, the agreement?
Don't matter.
Yeah, uh, it was, uh, sent to me, but we actually, we need the authority from you guys to do it, Patrick.
But you already did it.
Yeah, Ken, Ken had nego, had worked on some of the stuff. But there was also, they sent the business plan that still looks like it's got some old info in there. Because it listed a site that, uh, could not be.
Which one is this? Which, which group is this?
Tava.
Tava, yeah.
Tava? And where is their location?
Well, they should be on, um, Cranberry Highway, I think it's, uh.
Thirty-one nineteen is what I've got on the agenda.
But their business plan that was submitted still lists the, uh, seven fifty-nine Main Street, which is across from, uh, Deacon's. Across the street from Deacon's.
Thirty-one nineteen, that's gotta be the old Cranberry Buildings, right?
Yeah.
No. No, it's just, this, this is where Seers Rowback was.
That's, uh, that's thirty-one?
Yes, Jordan, Jordan Plaza.
Jordan Plaza.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah, I would like to make a couple of comments about that application because it really threw me when I saw the, I think it was seven fifty-nine Main Street. Which is near the school and it's owned by a particular person who has, I think, a squirrel. I have an address. And they're going to have the, uh, location there. It was almost as if you had two businesses, they were going to operate out of there. And I didn't know what they were going to do with the business, you know, located on Cranberry Highway. Because they're looking for a grow and a manufacturing, which I'm not sure that's possible in that location. Uh, I'm gonna basically be asking now for when it comes back before us, like to know who the investors are. As well as the officers, I have, I have some concerns about it. And if we all remember what happened in Fall River, uh, I'd always err on the side of conservative. Conservation because of what's happened before. We're all basically, we approve something. Uh, and if it's not completely clean, we're liable as well, so I just don't like the way this was presented. There's too many conflicts right now.
So, we know it's not, I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's not at seven fifty-nine. That's the old business plan that my understanding was rejected when they, that was brought forward. They're told they couldn't do that because it does not comply with our zoning, so.
Is this one of the, is this the retail license?
No.
No. No.
No, okay.
So would it be proper then to authorize the, uh, negotiation?
Nah, I didn't put it on the agenda that way. I put it, I put it to, uh, you know, authorize the, the agreement itself. So I'd rather go back and do it the right way next week. If, if they can get, if they can get the info to us in time, I have no problem stacking the two on the same agenda. That's not a problem, but.
Yeah. I would like to see them come in front of the board and, um, give a presentation like the Norton, most of the groups do. Um, who they are and, and what their plan is. And then, um, I mean, generally that's what's happened, at least that's what I've seen over the, the number of years that I was watching and that I've participated in. Um, I, I, I think we don't want to stray away from order and, and the process of which we've used previously. And, uh, as, as previous selectmen just spoke, uh, we want to be consistent in what we do.
I, I, I think the, the retail people we did have come in here.
Yeah.
I don't believe that we've had most of the manufacturers come in here. I mean, they, they do their public outreach meeting and, and all that sort of thing. So I think we've differentiated between the impacts because obviously retail is a much bigger deal in terms of.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, we don't get notified directly of. The public outreach meeting, so unless we happen to catch it on the calendar and or in the newspaper, it can go by us. And, um, we really should be notified and I think it's a good opportunity for, for the public and to get it documented. Who's coming in front of us for, for what? Um, it's just my opinion on this. And, um, I missed the, uh, uh, the notice in the newspaper for Tava on the, uh, the meeting. I think it was held in October after I looked back. Um, so, you know.
Oh, I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, uh, hold on a minute. So, we already have a retail license that we've approved out there, right? Is that correct?
No.
Yeah, no, we did. We gave a, a re, we had three retail licenses. We gave them all away and one of them was at that location. Cause they came in and gave us a presentation.
Not at that location, Patrick.
You know, yes, we did.
Different company, right?
Different company.
Okay, it might be a different company, but we approved a retail license at that location somewhere along the way and they came in in front of us. Cause I remember it.
This is not a retail license application.
Okay, so, so hold on, so, so there's going to be two things, so there's, now they're asking for, that's what I'm trying to clarify. So now they're asking us for a growing and manufacturing license at the same location? Is that what they're saying?
Yes.
So, but is the retail license still exists out there or is it gonna still be there or is it gonna become available?
Their application doesn't have anything to do with retail.
Different.
Okay, so, but the retail one is all done. We've already done that. We even have an agreement with them, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, we've got a host agreement with, um, that was, um, I'm trying to figure out, that was original Zephia, Zephias and it's changed its name since then.
Whatever, they change their name every day, these places, seems like. Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what's actually happening there, that's all. Okay, I get it. So there's two, in other words, they're trying to do two other things there besides the retail. This is a whole different company.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, so that one, uh, not to act on, the beach grass topicals, however. Uh, they did ask for permission, you know. We, we gave permission to the town administrator and the town planner to go ahead with those. Negotiations, so that, that's within the process we've been following.
I'd make a motion to authorize the execution of a host agreement that we have with them. She's been, she's been at this for like seven months already.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion by Alan, seconded by Patrick. Is there any discussion? Yeah, their, their attorney's been bombing me with emails, so how do you get it done? Get him off my case. Okay, seeing no questions, uh, call for the vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy? Uh, you're muted Judy, but you said yes. I saw your head go up and down and myself, yes, five zero zero. So that one's all set, so the town administrator cannot execute that. We'll hold off on Tava until we get a better picture of what they're all about. And, uh, I guess that's it for the agreements. Now we've got discussion regarding handling of prior town meeting warrant articles. As we know, uh, we have continued, not once, but twice. Uh, to not undertake certain town meeting articles in response to the COVID problem. And the fact that we didn't want to draw huge hordes of people to discuss things like a school name or Wareham Village rezoning. There may be a few others that would draw some people out, some zoning stuff. I know that Director Buckland, uh, the town planner, asked, uh, if there were any possibility, we could take these up. Before the spring annual town meeting, which is at the end of, uh, April. And I says, well, I don't know, let's see what the board as a whole thinks and we will go from there. I did, uh, tell Madam Moderator that, you know, this had been requested. And we've had some, a little bit of discussion on it. Uh, I think it's fair to say that. She, her preference would be to wait until April and if we have to go a couple of days on a football field somewhere, that's fine. She also said she was not available early April, so if we were going to do this, it would be in March when we already have the other one scheduled. So I just want to know everybody's thoughts. Now, I'll, I'll start with Alan.
Well, with what the state is telling us about the vaccine and stuff, with the general public's not going to get it till April. Uh, I think we're going to run into March and I think the moderator is going to have the same issue, you know, that she has now. And we know that one of the articles is the zoning for the overlay district that is being proposed. And I know that those particular people would like to see that get in place one way or the other, yes or no. Uh, but at the same time, we have to be realistic about public safety. And if the beginning of the shot starts in April and you have to have two shots to be safe, you're really looking at the end of April at best to. Be safe for the public, so this is going to be very difficult. It's gonna have to be Claire's decision anyways, no matter what. You know, but I think we're, we're running so close from one to the other, I, I think it's gonna end up, we probably gonna have to delay it, but. It's just my feeling because of the way the process is going. If it turns out that the vaccine gets out to everybody and, you know, by the beginning of March sometime or early March, then maybe we can go ahead and do it. I know for someone that's my age and stuff, you know, in my health conditions, et cetera, I'd be very leery about doing it until I know it's safe.
Uh, Patrick?
I'm all set.
Jim, any thoughts?
Yeah, you know, when it comes to the public health and safety, I think it's better to err on the side of caution than not. And, um, I would leave the, uh, I support the decision of a town moderator, you know, related and regarding this. So whatever she thinks would be best, I would support her on it.
Okay, uh, Judy?
I would agree with Mr. Mene's, um, public safety is absolutely the most important thing. The second most important thing is to have as many constituents as want to come to the meeting, be able to come to the meeting. And that isn't going to be possible until. Much, much later than we would like. So I think that we're going to be postponing it again.
Okay, and, and in that instance, uh, I would ask, uh. Then the Director of Planning and, you know, I guess the petitioners as well. Uh, because, you know, they've had a couple of articles delayed. Uh, we know that, and just ask them to, to submit them, uh, in accordance with the regular spring town meeting warrant. Based upon, based upon what I'm hearing, uh, I think that's the direction that, that we need to go with this at this point in time. So, with seeing people nodding and seeming to agree, that's, that's what I'll, I'll let the Director of Planning know. So, I guess that's it. We've, so in, in that instance, we won't be adding a second special town meeting to the docket. In addition to the one we already have, so we'll just leave it be. Uh, let's see, any town business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours? Alan?
No.
Jim?
No.
Patrick?
Nope.
Judy?
No.
Myself, no. Derek? You don't have anything? Okay, TA report, you got anything more to say or?
Uh, just, um, sort of circling back to something I said, what was said in the beginning. Right before, uh, Christmas, the, uh, town administrator from Marion contacted me. They wanted to get together with Rochester and Matt Depoisit for, uh, to be a regional center for, uh, the. The public safety personnel vaccine, so we were awarded the location. And, uh, I appreciate everybody working together on that. Now it's in the hands of the, sort of the public safety people that are organizing this. We, I think our numbers helped, uh, helped, uh, get the location, obviously, so.
Good, anything else?
Well, that's, uh.
Okay, ladies on initiative reports, Alan?
Uh, okay, first off, I was in contact with the Cannabis Control Commission today, asking some questions. And, uh, I asked them how they were doing with the, uh, applications, because everything is so far behind. They said they are. They're making a lot of noise. Uh, they said they.
Background noise there.
Yeah, they said they actually have. Are we ready? Okay, they're processing applications in five to seven days. So what, you know, and they're up to date, so what concerns me is we have a lot of people that have, you know, applied for. You know, programs with the town of Wareham. Um, I'm not going to ask Derek to give us any numbers right now. I did talk to him a little bit. And our, our revenue numbers are down this year, obviously. Uh, and the bottom line is we're expecting, you know, a certain dollar amount of, of revenue from marijuana. And I don't know why we have, I think we had ten or eleven applications for different. Either growing, manufacturing or retail and why we only, as of right now, I think we only have one, uh, retail marijuana and, uh. And medical, you know, functioning. So I think we should be reaching out, whether it's through, uh, Mr. Buckland, how we do it and find out what everybody's doing and why. Because what they explained to me today was that if there's an issue with someone's application, it goes back to the company or the organization. It's up to them to get it straightened out and get back to them. So I asked them, are you holding anything per se, you know, that's coming in? They said, no, we process out in five to seven days now. So I think there's an issue there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh, Selectman Slavin to. We, we've been hounding them, so bring them in front of the board and get them out, get the, take the license away from them, move it to somebody else as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, we, we, we've lost probably, and I'm going to say conservatively, six to seven months worth of revenue. Where, you know, two other retail locations plus the others, so. I always thought it was the Cannabis Control Commission that was causing a problem, but they fixed their, their stuff and they've got their act together, so we, we need to look at this.
Yeah, it's been frustrating me for a while, so.
Yeah, so I'm just letting you know where it's really at now. Uh, the planning board, just so everybody knows, will be revisiting that zoning article on January 11th, so the public will know that. The Littleton Drive, uh, project, which I think is to me, as far as the actual project, I think is one of the best. You know, affordable housing projects Wareham has ever seen, uh, has reached out to the, uh. CPC for CPA funds of a half a million dollars, just so people will know that that's coming through. And they made it in time, you know, for the spring town meeting application. The other piece that was mentioned earlier that, uh, Peter hadn't sent the letter out. I was on the phone with, two days now, with the Mass Municipal Association. About, uh, the issue of the impact fee, which, uh, is a problem because every one of these, every one of these. Organizations, we've had a deal and could have an impact fee. Uh, the Senate actually had passed. Uh, the Senate actually had passed uh, their piece of legislation eliminating the impact fee. Thankfully, the House did not act on it at all. Uh, I'm still not getting a straight answer whether or not anything happens tonight. Cause they have till tonight to finish up what they're doing. If it doesn't happen, it's going to come back in a coup, a month at the most. And there is a strong possibility, even with the MMA's uh, lobbying against it and asking for the uh. What we call our tax of three percent to be increased to five or six. Uh, we have to realize that we may lose that impact fee, which means we have to renegotiate every contract that we have. And that's going to be, Mr. Sullivan is really going to earn his money on that one. Uh, the other things that are going on is there is a sports book. Uh, bill that it looks like it's not going to get through and will get through probably the, maybe as little as three or four weeks if it passes. It has an effect on a potential project for Wareham as well. There's a housing bill and the other last piece is. There is a bill for the economic uh, help and also the transportation bond bill, which is our chapter ninety funds. And I'm hopefully that gets passed tonight. If not, we go with another delay and you may end up sitting here. Uh, not having funds for chapter ninety work until like May or, or June, which is kind of late to, you know. Contract with anybody for asphalt, et cetera. So I'll keep us, everybody up to date as we go along, but I just want everybody to know that there's a bunch of things sitting percolating. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Patrick?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Jim?
Um, well, we have an Affordable Housing Trust meeting next Tuesday and uh, I'll be getting a, a gender out on that. Um, that's usually at nine o'clock via Zoom. Hopefully I can get a Zoom hookup through the town and if not through uh, WCTV. And um. Couple of weeks, we have our uh. CMW, the just, you know, the refuse district meeting. Um, there's the structure or the responsibility of the district is now changed, more administrative oversight. Uh, we'll be doing a little reorganization as Marion has now officially um, withdrawn. Uh, from the district and uh, I'll, I'll be having some discussion with um. You know, he probably doesn't know yet, Town Administrator Sullivan about some things too and uh, and the board members. Um, of the CMW. Um. You know, it's, it's, we're, we're a member of that for another thirty years technically. So even though it'll be oversight and administration and basically, you know, making sure that. Any bills or insurances need to be paid or um. Uh, you know, related to retirement and health insurance and post retirement benefits is all, are all taken care of. Um. You know, so, so that's where we are and um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Judy?
No, thank you.
I don't have anything either. Uh, so we don't have any bills or documents? Alan, what are you waiting for? Uh, he didn't even have his mic on. He blew the golden moment here. Put your mic on, Alan.
As usual, starting off the new year, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, motion adjourned by Alan, seconded by Judy. Uh, let's see, roll call vote. Alan?
Sure.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, Wareham. Good night. Please be safe. We'll see you next week.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.